Okay, I'd like to go ahead and call to order Kodiak Island Borough Assembly Special Meeting for Thursday, November fourteenth, 2024, at exactly eight fifty-five PM. And roll call, please.
Mr. Ames, Mr. Griffin.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Mr. Ledoux. Mr. Sharrett.
Here.
Mr. Smiley.
Here.
Mr. Whiteside.
Here.
Mayor Art.
Here.
You have a call.
Ryan.
Move to excuse Assemblymember Ledoux for medical reasons.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign.
Aye.
Motion carries on there.
Mr. Mayor, just to be clear for the record, could we do a roll call vote on that?
Would you like one?
Yes, please, thank you. Mr. Griffin?
No.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Sharrett?
Yes.
Mr. Smiley?
Yes.
Mr. Whiteside?
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Motion passes to excuse, passes with four yes votes and one no vote.
Thank you. Next item is citizens' comments. This, the local number is nine oh seven, four eight six, three two three one. The toll free number is eight five five, four nine two, nine two zero two. And ask you to sign in and state your name for the record. Turn on the microphone before speaking. Address all remarks to the assembly as a body and not to any member thereof. If calling in, turn off any listening devices to prevent feedback.
My name is Bernadette DePlazes, and I want to bring to your attention the situation we have on the Russian River right now. The Russian River moves around a lot. It has been moving toward Leeta Street for years, and I think that the frontage we used to have has probably decreased from, in the back of our property, from two hundred feet, maybe, to about fifteen feet. A bunch of that happened this summer. We had a low-lying area by the river which became, I mean, this is what I think happened, became saturated, and then we had another storm, and it just sloughed in, like, just huge chunks. So, we're kind of concerned that our house is going to float down into Woman's Bay, which we would prefer not to have that happen. And I'd like to encourage you to do something to address this. It's been an ongoing problem for a long time. I know that downstream from us, several people have been impacted. I don't know if it's okay to mention names. Larry Evans' basement flooded. He had a completely finished basement. I think the third time it flooded, he gave up and ripped out all the drywall and all the carpeting and has not bothered to repair it again. It's just too expensive. There are over twenty homes on that side of the river that are potentially impacted. The river moves. Every time we have a big storm, it potentially moves. Those two hundred homes pay about a hundred thousand dollars in taxes. I mean, guessing if their taxes are about the same as ours, or every year, which we would like to encourage you to, like, instate a comprehensive plan to do something about this. I have talked to the Corps of Engineers. They have said that they do allow people to dredge rivers and put it back to its traditional channel if the river becomes excessively braided, is how the gentleman worded it to me. And when I asked him, I said, "Well, what's your criteria for approving a plan?" And he said, "Well, we really want it to work." So, you know, and that makes a lot of sense to me. As far as our other concerns, we're currently working with the Corps of Engineers and a contractor because we are in an emergency situation. We cannot afford to wait any longer. I don't know what this is going to cost. I'm terrified of what it's going to cost. We are hoping that Andy doesn't...
Go ahead and continue, Bernadette.
We're hoping that Andy doesn't have to put off his retirement. I am currently thinking about going back to work full-time. I think it's going to be a chunk of change. And the property values, I mean, in a situation right now where most of the homes that go on sale in Kodiak probably aren't on the market for weeks. Our neighbor, who actually hasn't been flooded, had his home on the market for six months and didn't get one offer. So, what is our property value? I don't think we can sell our house now for five thousand dollars. Like, nobody wants that. And it's not going to get cheaper. I mean, this is something that needs to be done. There's twenty houses on our side. I'm guessing on the other side of the river, there's probably at least that many more. And it's, it's not going to get cheaper, it's not going to get easier. We need to address this situation. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Bernadette's husband, co-owner of that property at five two two Leeta Street. This has been an ongoing problem for at least ten years now since the flooding started downstream from us. In all this time, I have never been able to do anything with it because there's a strip of rural land between our property and the river. So anytime you go to try and get a permit to do something to work on this, I was told, "You're not owner of the property, we can't give you any type of permit." Like Bernadette said, we're down to about ten to fifteen feet of rural land left before our property's starting to go. If this keeps going with the way the water looks like it's going, the whole river channel, I think, will move to the east and basically go through, right down beside us, House Russian Creek Road, all the store, and we'll through every one of those houses. It is a dire situation right now. We're going to do whatever we can if we have to. I would really rather be able to retire instead of spend all of the money that we have for that on fixing this. In the past, a past rural mayor told me on this situation that his staff failed us. I've also been told by a past rural employee that there was plans in place, they just had to fix one. I don't know if this is exactly factual or not, but that's what I've been told. So it's something that, it's just, I've never been able to do anything because it was all rural land that was getting eroded, and that's almost gone. Sorry if I rambled on about things and stuff like that, I'm not very good at this. Thank you very much for your help tonight.
Thank you, Andy. Anyone else wishing to come forward or call in? No calls at this time? Okay, we'll go ahead and move on to consideration of the matters in the call for the special meeting. The first, first item is election of the 2024, 2025 Borough Assembly Deputy Presiding Officer. So at this time, I'd like to go ahead and open nominations from the floor. Nominations. Bo?
Thank you. I move to nominate Jared Griffin as Deputy Presiding Officer.
Second.
Is there Jared?
I will move to nominate Ryan Sharrett also as DPO.
Okay, it's been moved. Is there any other...
I'll second.
...nominations? So with that, ballots are to be distributed and collected by the clerk.
My second choice is going to be Mr. Green Jeans.
We do have a majority vote for Mr. Jared Griffin. Congratulations.
The next item we have is Resolution Number 2025-10, Accepting Grant Funds from the Denali Commission for the Purpose of Updating the Kodiak Island Borough Solid Waste Management Plan and Related Regional Planning Activities. Scott?
I thought it was the DPO that did it.
Oh, already?
Okay. Well, you had to bask, I didn't know.
Hold on, hold on, okay. Where are we at? Move to adopt Resolution Number FY 2025-10.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Staff report, Amy?
The Denali Commission solicited statements of interest for regional solid waste management planning support for rural communities. Comprehensive regional strategies for waste management are lacking in many parts of Alaska, even as some regions have relied on increasingly on common waste management facilities over time. These facilities are often inadequate as they are originally designed to serve a different purpose. At the same time, operations could often be safer and more efficient. Other parts of Alaska lack any regionalization of solid waste management. Planning processes at the regional scale may offer opportunities to realize efficiencies and leverage shared interests and resources for long-term solutions to waste management challenges. The Commission announced the availability of funds for regional solid waste management planning. This announcement committed up to 1.5 million for this purpose. Respondents could have requested up to 500,000 dollars. The Kodiak Island Borough partnered with Kodiak Area Native Association to submit a request for a total of 500,000 dollars that included work being done by the two entities separately and also together. KIB requested 250,000 dollars for the update of the solid waste management plan. The Denali Commission has provided notification that the Kodiak Island Borough is eligible to receive their requested funding amount of 250,000 dollars to move forward with the solid waste plan update and other regional solid waste activities. Our 250,000 dollars will be a road system plan, YKANAS will be an off-road system plan. Then you have the resolution to accept this money, and the reason, I just wanted to explain, we did an ordinance earlier to accept money, it was because that money didn't have a defined purpose, and our code says if it doesn't have a defined purpose, the public should be able to help us decide. This does have a defined purpose, so the resolution will direct it directly to the solid waste regional plan.
Thank you. Assembly discussion or questions? Jared?
I think this is also important because, I think it's, correct me if I'm wrong, I think it's been a while since we've had a project supported by the Denali Commission, and so this is important that we accept these funds, do the project, do the project well, and just strengthen that partnership with the Commission.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, roll call vote on the motion, please.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Sharrett?
Yes.
Mr. Smiley?
Yes.
Mr. Whiteside?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Motion passes, five yes, zero no.
Next item we have is Resolution Number FY 2025-11, A Resolution of the Kodiak Island Borough Assembly, Accepting 2023 State and Local Cybersecurity Grant Program Funds in the Amount of 227,997 dollars. Jared?
Move to adopt Resolution Number FY 2025-11.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Staff report, Amy?
The state and local cybersecurity grant program is a federally funded pass-through grant program that provides funding to eligible entities to address cybersecurity risks and threats to information systems owned or operated by or on behalf of state, local, or tribal governments. Borough staff submitted an application requesting funding for two computer network security improvement projects, and notice has been received that the Kodiak Island Borough has been allocated 227,997 dollars in support of those contracts. Included in your packet is the resolution to accept those funds, and then a list of other communities in Alaska that receive fund from this project.
Questions or discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote on the motion, please.
Mr. Sharrett?
Yes.
Mr. Smiley?
Yes.
Mr. Whiteside?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Motion passes, five yes, zero no.
Thank you. Next item is rescinding the approval of contract number FY 2024-38 with Otis Elevator Company for elevator maintenance services. Jared?
Move to rescind the authorization for the Borough Manager to award contract number FY 2024-38 with Otis Elevator Company for elevator maintenance services at the Kodiak Fisheries Research Center.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Staff report, Amy?
On June 27th, 2024, the Borough Assembly awarded contract number fiscal year 2024-38 to Otis Elevator Company. Since that time, the Kodiak Island Borough Engineering Facility staff has been actively engaged in contract negotiations to finalize the agreement. However, on September 10th, 2024, Otis submitted an email proposing additional conditions that the KIB was unable to accept. With negotiations at an impasse, the KIB sought guidance from the Borough Attorney. Following the Borough Attorney's legal advice, the KIB engineering facility staff decided to cancel the bid per Section Two, Part Eighteen, called bid cancellation of the invitation to bid. This decision was further supported by the fact it had been over the forty-five day time limit for executing the contract after the award had passed. While KIB code permits awarding the contract to the next responsible bidder, both the Borough Attorney and KIB staff agreed that rebidding the contract would ensure greater transparency and a cleaner process. Since the Assembly had formally awarded the contract by vote on June 27th, the KIB engineering facility staff now request the Assembly to rescind the award officially, which would cancel both the award and the contract. And also, our engineering facilities director is still in the audience, if you have any questions.
Ryan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Madam Manager, was there a second bidder to this contract?
TK?
Okay, so, I have a problem with this. So, the subject of this approval is to rescind an approval of a contract. A contract wouldn't be commissioned until it meets all of the facets of a contract, including signatures from both parties. So, are we rescinding something that has already been signed? Okay, so nothing has been signed. So, I know you guys have a borough legal opinion on this, however, we aren't going to be able to rescind a contract if it's not a contract. So what I feel like we're doing right now is we're trying to take back an intent, and if we had two responsive bidders, we just, we just had this conversation about responsive and non-responsive bidders. And so, I understand there's a forty-five day window on this, and that's the premise of the attorney's making a legal decision that this should be canceled in this manner. I do not wholeheartedly agree with that decision, and I would ask that we take a look at the second bidder, whoever that is, and perhaps re-present this to the Borough Attorney in a different manner. Again, I feel like we can't rescind a contract if it's not a contract. So I actually have a problem with this structurally. Thanks.
Nova?
Mr. Mayor, members of the Assembly, and maybe the manager too, I would like to maybe raise a point of clarification, because the action that you've taken at that meeting was giving an authorization for the manager to award the contract. I think that's the action that you're rescinding. It's not actually the awarding of the contract. It's your authorization that you've given the manager to award the contract. That's what you're taking back with this action. Thank you.
Ryan?
But the contract, the solicitation had two responsive bidders. We may have moved to authorize the Borough Manager to award a contract to a responsive bidder, but negotiations failed. Through best management practices of contracting, it would then go to the next responsive bidder. What I'm trying to get clarification on is if, if the only reason the attorney is saying cancel the whole thing is because of this forty-five day time limit, that, to me, still doesn't feel like this is correctly procured. So I, I understand we're removing the authorization in the opening sentence of the recommendation. However, I still feel like there's some procurement anomalies that exist here, that if, if we do it this way, I'm just going to, I'm going to look at end state. If we do it this way and we rebid this, now two competing entities now understand where each of their price points are, I would feel like that would be an unfair advantage, and I think that that muddies the waters substantially. So, for those reasons that I've indicated and discussed, I cannot support this and would recommend that the staff move to the next responsive bidder.
Amy?
Did you see me go, hmm, and then you called on me? Thanks. I, so, since this went out, like, four months ago, I, we would have to ask that next responsive bidder if we could, if that, they were still going to honor those prices, and they still were willing and able to do the work. So I guess that would be step one. And our, we do have that in our code that we're absolutely allowed to do that, and I don't know if the, Dave, do you know if the Borough Attorney's opinion was based just on the forty-five days? So we can ask for clarification about that and bring it back?
Yeah, so what we might want to do, we could either fail this or we could postpone it to the regular meeting next. Well, agenda's already been set. What's the procedure for adding that, this potentially?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear your comments.
Right, right now, we can, we could postpone decision on this, and the question is, the agenda's been established, but the packet hasn't been. Can we add this to the agenda for next Thursday?
Mr. Mayor, what are you adding?
It would be, if we move to postpone this decision, it would be that.
We're on the elevator contract rescinding, so they want to make a decision once we get more information on, from the lawyer.
So, you're going to deal with this item now, at this special meeting, and then you're going to add an item at the next regular, at the meeting next week?
No, we'd like to postpone this.
No, we'd like to postpone this to the meeting next week, for staff to get additional information.
You can definitely postpone it to the next meeting.
Okay. So I, yes, Dave?
A question, and then potentially followed by a motion. What is to prevent us from passing this motion and still continuing to go back to the next responsive bidder? This isn't canceling anything other than the authorization with Otis Elevator Company. So, there's still a bid that was done. You follow the question?
I understand where you're going with that. I see Ryan's hand, and then I see Nova's, both. So, Nova, would you like to speak first?
Mr. Mayor, that's what I thought too, is that this is very specific to the authorization you've granted the manager. I think, no matter what, you're going to have to rescind it. If you go with the another, the other one, you're, you're going to have to do something with this one, because you've taken an action. So you're going to have to rescind it, no matter what, and then place another item on the agenda for next week, if that's what you desire to do. That's just my take on it. Thank you.
Ryan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I see this, again, differently, I guess. This has a nomenclature assigned to it, FY 2024-38, which would be then correlated to a responsive RFP or ITB. So to me, that 2024-38, as a solicitation was released, would have responsive bidders that was captured under 2024-38. If you were to cancel this, you would have to rebid this. That's the way I see that.
That's what I was wondering, too. Yeah, that's what I was wondering. What's the wishes of the Assembly? Dave?
I, I would offer that we've discussed this at a work session. We don't know if this requires us to start this process over. I think we can defer it for a week and get an answer to that, and then continue on, rather than inadvertently restart a process by, you know, I don't see harm in...
Want to move, move to postpone to 21st?
I would like to move to postpone discussion to the 21st.
Okay, there's a second. It's been moved and seconded.
But I've got a hand up over there that seems very concerned.
Okay, I'm, so you, you're planning to postpone, are we going to have answers by next week, by Monday, you think, manager? Because I'm releasing the packet on Monday, that's my concern.
I just got a no from Dave on that.
So if that's the case, maybe you should consider postponing it to the December 19 meeting, if you're not in a hurry to, I, I just want to catch it before we, because you can definitely postpone it next week, but if it's not going to be ready, you're going to have to postpone it again in December, to December meeting.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Conrad has a comment that he wants to make.
Dave, you want to come up to the podium, so get on the record, please?
I simply can't guarantee that I'm going to get an answer from the attorney to present Monday. I feel I'm being put in a very precarious situation here.
Well, I think one of, one of the questions is whether the second bidder is interested in, in also negotiating, talking.
I don't know how much you want me to explain here. The issue came down to a tiered level, and when the bidder that we're discussing right now, as negotiations continued, they're putting more stipulations in. The last time they came back with any kind of information, they were tying the borough to, requiring the borough to sign a document that said if, due to our condition of survey that we did not feel they were providing the service required, we would be responsible from the date that we would cancel their existing contract, to pay the remaining balance of that contract, no matter when we canceled. So we thought that was unreasonable. The other thing they came out at the end was that because our, our elevators are obsolete and have obsolete things in them, obsolete components, that the tiered system that they offered would not honor the obsolete items. So those were the items that came before us that led us down this trail. No, we did not have direct conversation, as we were advised with a forty-five days by the Borough Attorney not to continue, continue conversation. It would be cleanest to get rid of this, you know, rescind this, and put this out to bid, and our preference is to do that so we can use our new bid formats.
Okay, so right now, we have a motion to postpone to November 21st. Ryan, you had your hand up.
Mr. Mayor, we don't have a motion to postpone yet.
Yeah, we did.
We did? Did we have a second?
Dave moved.
I seconded it.
Okay.
Yeah. So, Ryan?
So I was hoping to catch Mr. Conrad before he stepped back down, but what I heard during that description is that the borough, through negotiations, or failed negotiations, determined the original awardee, non-responsive, which would then strengthen this case that you cannot solicit, you cannot cancel this, you have to seek the second solicitor.
And, and that's what I would ask... And, and that's what I would ask the Attorney. I just can't guarantee I'm gonna have an answer by Monday to fit the packet.
Roger. Now, I appreciate that, but again, what your statement was strengthens my position on this, that you, it's, it would not be in the Borough's best interest, um, to enter a lawsuit over failed procurement processes, uh, which is, as you know, uh, very near and dear, uh, to one of the main reasons that I'm sitting on the Assembly. Uh, I do not believe that we've conducted, uh, our evaluation correctly, and that we need to maintain the integrity of this FY 2024 dash 38 as it exists, and enter into negotiations with the second bidder pending a detailed analysis from the Attorney, because I'm, I'm not entirely sure that the Attorney understands, um, that perspective in entirety. I can't see an Attorney agreeing with canceling it as it's presented to us. I, I'm hoping they'll come back and listen to the feed. Thank you.
Okay. What's the wishes of the Assembly? You have a motion to postpone, do you want to change?
Let's vote on the motion to postpone.
And it's to, right now, it's motion to postpone to November 21st. Dave?
I'd like to amend the motion to postpone to November 21st to, um, December 19th.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded to change the date from November 21st to December 19th. Any discussion, further discussion on the motion to postpone to December 19th? Okay, roll call vote on the amendment to the motion to postpone.
Okay, Mr. Smiley?
Yes.
Mr. Whiteside?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Sharrett?
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Motion passes, five yes, zero no.
Now you have the main motion to postpone, as amended, to December 19th. Roll call vote on the motion, please.
I think it's just been postponed to December, uh, December 19th. We don't need another motion.
I believe we do, because we amended the initial motion, which was to postpone, so now we still haven't decided whether or not to postpone.
I stand corrected. I will do that.
Sorry, that wasn't my.
No, that's why I called it the way I did.
Okay, Mr. Whiteside?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Sharrett?
Yes.
Mr. Smiley?
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Motion passes, five yes, zero no. So, the item has been postponed to December 19th.
We got there.
We got there.
Thank you. Um, next item is declaring a seat vacant on the Solid Waste Advisory Board, Ms. Carrie Iron's seat. Um, Jared?
Move to accept with regret the resignation of Ms. Carrie Irons on the Solid Waste Advisory Board, effective October 23rd, 2024, and direct the Borough Clerk to advertise the vacancy per Borough Code 2.100.070D.
Second. It's been moved in seconded. Staff report, Nova?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, we would like to thank Ms. Carrie Irons for her service on the Solid Waste Advisory Board. Uh, so what we're going to do is that once this, um, motion passes, we'll be advertising tomorrow and also next week, and that will be the two weeks requirement of the code. We'll satisfy the code requirement, and then we will be able to appoint another applicant to this seat by next week. Thank you.
Okay. Um, any further questions on this? Okay, seeing none, roll call vote on the motion, please?
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Sharrett?
Yes.
Mr. Smiley?
Yes.
Mr. Whiteside?
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Motion passes, five yes, zero no.
Okay. Next item we have is confirmation of mayoral appointments of Ms. Lena Harrington and Ms. Kimberly Olson to the Solid Waste Advisory Board. Jared?
Move to confirm the mayoral appointments to the Solid Waste Advisory Board of Leanna Harrington to an at-large seat for a term to expire on December 31st, 2024, and Kimberly Olson to a retail business representative seat for a term to expire on December 31st, 2024.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
You guys got slow there for a minute. Okay.
I'm stoned by the, uh, December 20, 31st, 2024. So, we're gonna have a whole month and a half.
Okay. Uh, staff report, Nova?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have anything else to add.
Okay. Dave?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I'd like to thank the two applicants for applying, and I expect this to pass, but I will be voting no, because I feel very strongly that there needs to be a thorough vetting for, um, these advisory board seats. Um, having been subjected to appointments of advisory board members, um, it's very easy for the elected body to appoint someone and, and kind of just forget about it. Um, and appointments can make the staff's life hell. And so, for that reason, without, you know, with a one-sentence answer as to why, uh, the, the interest is to serve, I, I won't be voting yes on this.
Mr. Mayor?
Any further discussion?
Don't you vet them?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. No, they're both in business. Here's why I feel that, that, um, they would be an asset to the community, and just not, you know, at large, that don't have an idea. They're in, they're in, they're in business. So, Ryan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can you describe the vetting process to, so maybe we better understand it? Uh, you know, is there a questionnaire, an interview, maybe what that process looks like?
Yeah, a little bit here. Um, basically, you, we have a, uh, large retail, uh, seat, and, um, Kimberly Olson is the manager of Walmart, and she put her name in for it, and I felt it would be a good fit, because, um, Safeway hadn't been interested. I also couldn't get Sutliffe, um, David to apply, and, uh, so, this one's been vacant for a while. She had lived here, she's now lived here for a year, and I think she's well-suited to that position. Then, uh, Linnea Harrington has, you know, you've, you've heard her come before us and speak on, um, the restaurant license, uh, process that we made some mistakes on and, and corrected with input from her. And in, in talking with her, she was interested in, in getting involved in local government, and it's sometimes hard to get younger people involved, and I felt this would be a good opportunity for her being in private business herself, uh, you know, a business owner, to do it. So, that was part of how I, I vetted these two here. Yes, Ryan?
Yeah, thank you very much for that explanation, uh, and not just, um, submitting a name without, um, merit behind it. So, I, I appreciate that, uh, explanation, that vetting, uh, that transparency, uh, that we talked about earlier today. Uh, I think that that is, um, uh, great, and to share that information at, with the Assembly. Uh, so, I will be supporting this, uh, based on, uh, not only their application, but also the debriefing that we just received. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion or comments? Roll call vote on the motion, please?
Mr. Johnson?
No.
Mr. Sharrett?
Yes.
Mr. Smiley?
Yes.
Mr. Whiteside?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Motion passes with four yes, one no.
Okay. Next item we have is confirmation of Assembly appointment to the Bayview Service Area Board, uh, Mr. Sean Rawolf. Um, Jared?
Move to confirm the Assembly appointment of Sean Rawolf to the Bayview Service Area Board for a term to expire in October 2027.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded. Um, what, I'll go ahead and, um, get into part of the discussion, because I helped move this forward and helped, uh, encourage him to do this, this year, and also last. He was the sitting member on the board. We had appointed him a couple of years ago, approximately, and, um, he didn't realize he needed to come in during this election and register as a write-in. And so, he had, he had gotten four votes, but he didn't register, and so, therefore, it was null and void. I encouraged him to fill out the application. He came in right away and did it, and, um, this then puts three members on the board is with the intent. They have a five-member board, and the idea is to have a core there. So... Any further discussion? Roll call vote on the motion, please?
Mr. Sharrett?
Yes.
Mr. Smiley?
Yes.
Mr. Whiteside?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Motion passes, five yes, zero no.
And that concludes the business of the special meeting. Um, I'd recommend, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second, third, and moved in seconded and third. And, um, we are, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries unanimously, and it is 9:36 PM. Thank you all.